Thank you.
Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The meeting will convene at six thirty P M. And visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you are able to hear any discussion. Thank you.
So moved.
Moved by board member head and seconded by board member Snipes. Thank you.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Cracky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Teela.
Aye.
Six aye. We should.
Okay, now we'll do roll call, sorry.
Cassidy Erdnberger.
Here.
Head.
Present.
Holman.
Cracky.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Snipes.
Here.
Snow. Teela.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. Next is the school spotlight with Mr. Maskel.
Mr. Ray, can I ask you to assist in logging into the computer, please? Well, Mr. Ray is coming over. Good evening, Acting President Erdnberger, members of the board and Superintendent Logan. Our OPS proud spotlight this evening features McMillan Middle School students and staff for their success at Nebraska Science Olympiad. The Monarch team won nine of sixteen events competing alongside schools in Nebraska. McMillan won first place overall, a milestone for the team.
So the Nebraska State Science Olympiad is a competition that riggers more towards different events. There's events in biology, chemistry, physics, earth science, there's building events, there's trial events.
So I won gold in water quality and then also gold in experimental design. It was mainly like other people's science fair projects like put into it and then us analyzing them and giving like critiques about what they could have changed, like what the best change would have been.
So they get to kind of diverge out of the studying your normal everyday school stuff to branching out two different subjects.
Right. These are medals from the Nebraska State Science Olympiad, a gold, a silver, and a silver. It was fun. You did work, but it was also fun. Fun to just hang around with your friends.
I have been doing Science Olympiad for twelve years now. We've placed in the top six, or ten out of the eleven years, and we were runner up one year. So we've been chasing it ever, ever since I started. And then finally to win was, it was quite exciting.
Congratulations to the McMillan Middle School Science Olympiad team.
Thank you, Mr. Maskel. That's very exciting. Moving on to board and superintendent communications, Dr. Logan.
Good evening, Acting President Erdnberger, Acting Vice President Smith, and members of the board, those who are in attendance and those watching at home today, the stream. This morning, we joined Governor Pete Ricketts, the Department of Health and Human Services, and the Douglas County Health Department in a press conference to encourage our senior high school students and soon-to-be graduates to get vaccinated before school ends. Later this week in our health and safety newsletter, we will share details about upcoming vaccination clinics hosted by the county and other partners. These options give our families access to protect themselves and others. We are encouraged by recently expanded vaccination eligibility, allowing children ages twelve and older to get vaccinated with a parent or guardian present, and if their family so desires. We are grateful to our partners at Douglas County Health Center and One World Community Health for supporting our vaccination efforts. Last week, we announced a proposed partnership with the YMCA and One World Community Health Centers. I am pleased to note that in the audience today is Andrea Skolken, who is the executive director of the One World Community Health Centers and has been a wonderful partner with the Omaha Public Schools for many, many years. We are looking forward to expand access to health and wellness services at the future Buena Vista High School at Sixtieth and Alstreaks. The opportunity to welcome both the YMCA and One World at Buena Vista High School reflects our commitment to the health and well-being of the young people we serve in our greater Omaha community. Tonight's item for consideration is construction and design. Partnership specifics are forthcoming. We are excited to offer our families the convenience of wellness services connected to our school and pending board approval, we're eager to move forward with the construction design. Speaking of our future high school, made possible by the May two thousand and eighteen bond, I'd like to briefly preface a presentation you will see again from our Chief Financial Officer, Scott Roberts. We're pleased to report that our bond work proceeds on budget and largely ahead of schedule. Because we're progressing more rapidly than originally planned, we're recommending the approval of a revised budget. This request would not increase taxpayers' obligations. It approves funding originally set to be spent out of next year's budget. Instead of spending it next year, we would, we would use it this year to continue our exciting progress. Mr. Roberts will provide more details as the agenda proceeds tonight. Engagement opportunities will soon begin, actually they began this evening at Burke High School, with our, for our proposed college and career academies and pathways. Many invitations have gone out to families with a middle or high school student and will expand to families with elementary students later this week. Information about broader community engagement opportunities will be forthcoming as well. College and career academies and pathways are about expanding access to high-quality high school programming and elevating expectations for every student we serve so they are prepared for success in college, career, and life. We value the input from the stakeholders and look forward to the conversations to come. In two thousand and twenty, next, next week, we have our two thousand and twenty-one commencement ceremonies. Actually, we began last week with J. P. Lord on Friday, and we will continue tomorrow with our integrated learning program tomorrow afternoon. At the end of this month, we will celebrate our high school seniors and graduation ceremonies that welcome some loved ones in person in Baxter Arena and allows others to join via live stream. Families can access those live stream links from our website at OPS.org. Look under the announcement sections. The live streams will begin shortly after the school's appointed time. We are incredibly proud of the accomplishments of our graduates. Class of two thousand and twenty-one, you have achieved so much during very challenging times. Your resilience and courage have not gone unnoticed. We cannot wait to see what you do next. Congratulations are also in order this evening for the first graduating class of Omaha Virtual School. The program began in the two thousand and sixteen seventeen school year. We are very proud of our first Omaha Virtual School alumni cohort. Congratulations to Matty Gates of Ryan High School for earning the Omaha Education Association Foundation Scholarship. Congratulations to all of our graduate, graduating seniors recognized as top seniors this year. Our outstanding students were chosen based on their leadership, academic performance, role modeling for other students, and community service. Kudos to each of them. In closing, I want to highlight that we will launch our upcoming summer reading program within the next few weeks. Our annual summer reading program encourages pre-K through sixth grade students to establish a reading routine of at least twenty minutes each day. We will send our elementary schoolers home with a bag of free scholastics books, I think it's ten, to continue building their reading muscle and avoid summer slump. Reading is a lifelong skill that must be nurtured through consistent practice. Families, we need your help establishing those routines and giving reminders this summer. Again, this summer, we're challenging our schools to encourage summer reading and logging those reading minutes. Students can soon access the reading log from our website. Each of our students will also have the option to keep their district provided internet-enabled iPad over the summer. Students can access our educational resources online during summer break. We continue encouraging our families to get vaccinated. Together, we can impact the path of our families, neighbors, and greater community. This concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Now I'll have any comments from board members. Ms. Snipes, I believe you have some comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say first, just stress again, I'm really excited about the partnership with Buena Vista and the YMCA and One World. As someone who lives in South Omaha, I'm glad to see Andrea here tonight as well. As we talk about wellness and health and wellness and after coming from dealing with COVID, and that's something that we have to start focusing on more when we talked about underlying conditions and how many people are not here today, just because of things like that. So I'm really excited about that. I just want to take a moment to thank Dr. Logan. I recognize I wear a couple of hats here, one as a school board member and one as a community advocate and member. And as a school board member, I recognize we've had conversations about communication, about transparency and things like that. So I appreciate her willing to come to our platform at the South Omaha Neighborhood Alliance to go in detail about the academies and pathways. It was a chance for people to learn, to ask questions, and get more information, so I'm grateful for that. As a community member, I'm grateful that people had the opportunity to listen and to hear and are still able to ask questions and get more information. So it's a work in progress, but I just wanted to say thank you, and we really, really appreciate it.
That's my favorite group. But then the next one I see will also be my favorite group, so.
Thank you, Ms. Snipes. Ms. Cracky, you have some comments?
Yes, I, I have a question, and I imagine the district has the times and places announced, or maybe they're out and I don't know where they are. On the academy and pathways program, we were going to have four of them to go to, and so do we know where they are and when?
Yes, we do. We had the first one this evening at, at your high school, Burke. There were, there were only, two parents were able to make it, it's likely the weather, or there are so many events going on this week. So somebody sent me actually some photos this afternoon, just a few minutes ago of that. So they are, I believe we sent them in your email, but I can certainly, I'm happy to go over with them. I will call you tomorrow and go over them with you.
Or I'll look it up and see what date they came to us on.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think I had them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Krackey. I have a couple items that I wanted to go over that are in the consent agenda. One is, you might have seen that item 115 and 131 are both contracts with the Metropolitan Community College, and those are both exciting relationships that the OPS has had for many, many years. One, the Gateway to College program is a dual-credit high school diploma completion program for students ages 16 to 20, and secondary students who are, can attend full-time and get their college credits. There's also another program where they attend not as full-time students. Item 131 is a contract that outlines the relationship between our teachers and Metropolitan Community College and the circumstances under which they are accredited for teaching in our schools to deliver those credits, and under some circumstances, the MCC faculty are in our schools as well. We have about 3,500 student credits being earned at this point in time. Just a little advertisement for MCC while I'm at it. You may or may not know that there is free summer credit in the, at MCC called MCC College Now. So if you have any students that are between the ages of 16 and, well, if they're going to be graduating by 2024, then go to the MCC College Now and maybe they can get some free college credits in the first quarter of this summer. One of the other items, 120 describes, and we've talked about this before, the purchase of property adjacent to the Buena Vista High School over on 60th and L. We will be adding 7.4 acres, and it's not just property, includes easement rights, increased, improved access to the site. It allows for future expansion of our building, and it may also permit us to close the frontage road that runs along the south side of that property so that we will have more control and of access to that entire corner, basically. So that's one of the items we're going to be covering in, that's included in our consent agenda. The purchase is currently scheduled for June 15th. Last but not least, items 121 through 127 are the purchase of computers for all of our high schools for the freshman academies. And for anybody out there that's saying, didn't we just buy 52,000 computers? What's this about? These are computers that are significantly higher-tech CAD design. They can interface with our potential employer partners in our freshman academies, and they are largely in the form of being labs. That's on, that they're like on basically trolleys that can go from room to room. So these computers are not the ones that, same as the academic computers that each of the students got iPads. These are higher-tech, if you will, have different programs on them, specifically designed to interface with the objectives of the freshman academy. So I thought you'd be interested in knowing that. And with that, I believe every board member that wanted to say something has had a chance, and we will move on to public comments. Masks are required to be worn in order to speak during public comment. If you're not wearing a mask, a mask will be provided to you at the podium to wear while speaking. Do I have anybody? Oh, I don't have anybody. Darn, I was going to do this so well, too. Shoot. Okay, we're going to not have any public comments, and... Moving on to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Motion by Board Member Smith.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Thielen. Will you take the roll call, please, Mr. Ray?
Snipes.
Aye.
Thielen.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Krackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Six A.
Thank you very much. The motion carries. Moving on to the action, oh, darn it. I'm sorry. Please forgive me. My first time. I needed to identify that act, that item 1.13 on the consent agenda had been pulled, and it's going to be one of our action items. So we are going to cover it. It's just, was not just voted on, and I apologize. Do we need to go back and do that over again? No, my lawyer says we don't. Okay. Moving on then to our action items. J1A is approval of the report of the Legislative Committee including recommended legislative positions. Mr. Head, would you please cover that report for us?
Yeah, thank you, Acting President Erdenberger. We don't have any new legislative positions again this week. I'll just give everyone a quick update on where the legislature's at. They were in recess again today. Tomorrow is day 79 of the 90-day session, but it is the Speaker's intention to not use the full 90 days. He announced that they are planning to adjourn Thursday, May 27th, so that'll be next week. So with that in mind, they're going to be moving on. Anything left on select file and final reading yet this week? Major bills that we have still pending is, the big one's LB 147, which is our pension bill. We expect that to be heard middle of the week, I believe, this week. Outside of that, we have LB 529, which we support. It's extending the lottery, or the sunset, sorry, for the lottery funding. That'll be up tomorrow on select file. Other bills to note, LB 396 is the farm-to-school nutrition program that we supported. That'll be up later on this week as well. So that's all we have. With that, I'd move for approval of the committee report.
So moved.
Okay, we have a...
Seconded.
Moved to seconded, third. Mr. Smith, Mr. Thielen, Ms. Snipes, sorry. I'm not sure there's any action involved. Are we gonna... No action other than to say thank you. Good job as Chair of the Legislative Committee as we have worked our way through a very long and challenging legislative session. I'm going to interrupt the action item proceedings for a second and defer to Superintendent Logan, who has a couple of members in the audience that she would like to recognize now.
Thank you. I apologize. I meant to recognize these folks during my remarks. I want to first start with our, two, two of our principals who are here. One is a brand-new principal. Mrs. Megan Beckett is going to Adams Elementary School. We're super proud of her. So if you could stand so we can be recognized, Megan, that'd be great. Mrs. Emily Hughes is going to, back to one of her first loves, which is dual language, and she'll be transitioning from Oak Valley Elementary School to Liberty Elementary School as Dr. Oberst is retiring after, I believe, 38 years of service. I believe it's 38 years of service that Dr. Oberst is retiring. We'll be celebrating her a little later this month. So thank you, Mrs. Hughes, and appreciate you being here. Mr. Cecil Hicks, our new Chief Talent Officer is here. I want to make sure that Mr. Hicks is recognized. He's there. Please wave to Mr. Hicks and give him a round of applause. And lastly, I know I mentioned her earlier. Andrea Skolken is here from One World and will be our partner at, well, is already our partner, but will add another pending board approval a little bit later this evening. And I just wanted to publicly, we have been attached at the hip, I think, for the last 17 months, and just want to publicly thank her and her team for their incredible work that they do in our community and have, as they have supported our UNMC testing. UNMC may, may have gotten a lot of the glory, but One World was our, one of our clinical partners, and also, when people got sick, they had to have treatment. And so One World was, was certainly a huge partner in that. I, there's not probably a finer person walking around in Omaha than Andrea Skolken, so I really want to make sure I thank them and so they can go home, too. So thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. It has been a remarkable 17 months, as we all know, and partnerships like that are essential. We will now move to the approval or consideration for approval of Amendment 2021, to the 2020, 2021 Special Building Fund Budget. Presentation by our CFO, Mr. Scott Roberts.
Acting President Erdenberger, Acting Vice President Smith, members of the Board, Superintendent Logan, good evening. I think it would be helpful for us to walk through some of the background on this issue to better understand why we are meeting this evening. First, it is important to point out that the cash necessary for this amendment is already on hand and available for use. Additionally, this amendment does not impact our tax levy or other taxpayer funds in the current fiscal year. Annually, a budget is established for each of our 11 separate funds. We're not allowed to exceed the spending authority established within our budget for each of these funds. When the adopted budget is deemed insufficient to meet our needs in the current fiscal year, a budget amendment is required. For reasons to be discussed shortly, we are seeking a $40 million increase in the Special Building Fund for fiscal year 2020, 2021. For purposes of clarity, bond-related construction activities are accounted for in the Special Building Fund. As bonds are sold, the proceeds are deposited into this fund, and those dollars are then used to pay for construction-related activities on schools covered by the bond. While it may be counterintuitive, the bond fund itself is only used for principal and interest payments that are required annually on our outstanding bonds. Each summer, Jacobs prepares a long-term monthly cash flow forecast, and the cash flow forecasts for those bond-related projects are the basis for our budget for the next year. With favorable conditions over the winter, crews were able to complete more work than anticipated, and we're now ahead of schedule on several of the bond-related projects. There are two reasons for the favorable conditions that I mentioned on the prior slide. First, we had a relatively mild winter weather conditions, and second, there was better-than-expected labor availability for our projects. In order to ensure that work on these projects can continue uninterrupted in the current fiscal year, additional spending authority is being requested for this year. As mentioned previously, the funds are already on hand and available for use within the Special Building Fund. This slide shows a few examples for three of our schools. As you can see, Westview High School is currently three months ahead of schedule. Buena Vista High School, seven months, and the middle school at 42nd and Y is currently four months ahead of plan. Mark Sommer from Jacobs is here this evening in case there are detailed questions regarding these projects individually or other projects within the bond activities. This table includes some information published in the Omaha World-Herald as required for our annual budget notice as well as an amendment notice. That amendment notice ran in last Wednesday's paper as required by statute. As you can see, this amendment only impacts the Special Building Fund and increases our spending authority by $40 million. No other funds are impacted by this amendment. Additionally, you will see at the bottom of the table, there is no change to our property tax levy for the current fiscal year. The amendment process itself is well-defined by the state. Earlier this evening, we have held a pub, public hearing as required for the proposed amendment. Tonight, a simple majority is required in the affirmative to approve this amendment. If the proposed amendment is approved by the Board, Kristi Rakovsky, our Budget Director, will then refile certain documents with both Douglas and Sarpy Counties, as well as the Nebraska Department of Education and the Nebraska Auditor of Public Accounts. This concludes my remarks for the evening, and at this point, I'd be happy to field any questions that you may have.
Sorry, Mr. Head.
Yep. Thank you, Acting President Erdenberger, and thank you for the presentation, Mr. Roberts. I know we've had this conversation before, and you just covered it in your, in your presentation. I just wanted to clarify again for the record that this amendment is essentially, we're ahead of schedule on construction, so we're taking money that we already have from the voter-approved bonds and spending it, you know, earlier than we would have, but it's not, you know, not a new taxing authority. We're not increasing the levy or anything like that.
That is correct. We're simply moving some of the spending we anticipated on these projects next year into this year because we are ahead of schedule.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You bet.
I just want to say to all the people that worked on that, how happy the staff will be that they can move in there and get going. They're going to just be thrilled with this extra time. So, and congratulations to those out in the field that did that. I'm anxious to see those schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Krackey. Do we have any other questions from members of the Board? We're looking forward to seeing all of those new buildings shortly, so, and having them ahead of schedule is certainly wonderful. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendment of the 2020-2021 Special Building Fund Budget for Douglas County School District 1.
Move approval?
Okay, I think that was moved by Mrs. Krackey and seconded by Ms. Snipe.
Oh.
Okay, moved by Ms. Snipe, sorry.
Seconded.
Could everybody just take their masks off so I could see who's talking? Did I have a second? I'm sorry. Mr. Thielen, thank you very much. Mr. Ray, will you take the roll call?
Thielen.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Krackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Six A.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Now, we'll have approval of the first reading of the Code of Conduct revisions for the 2021-2022 school year, and Dr. McFarland will be making that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the Board, and Dr. Logan. It's good to be here with you again. Tonight, I am here for the second reading and to request action on the 2021-22 Student Code of Conduct. At our May 3rd Board Meeting, I presented you the recommended draft of the Student Code of Conduct, and during this meeting, as well as following, we received additional feedback for additional considerations as we present to you. We have made some changes since the May 3rd presentation, and I would like to review those for you right now. You've been provided with three documents for this evening's presentation. Document 1 is the draft that was presented to you during the May 3rd meeting with updates and edits included. The updates since the first reading on May 3rd are highlighted in that document in yellow. Document 2 is a summary of the edits since the May 3rd first reading, and Document 3 is the same document presented at that meeting, the unauthorized tools poster insert that will be inserted on page 30 of your draft. So I will draw your attention to Document 2, and I will review for you the additional recommendations that we have for the Student Code of Conduct. On page 3, in your draft, you will see highlighted that we have amended the language for bullet point number 4 to read, "Establish and maintain an atmosphere of high achievement and appropriate behavior for the learning environment," excuse me, "in the learning environment." On page 7, under the statement concerning suspension guidelines for grades K through 6, we have deleted the word "elementary" in reference to the principle, "supporting our developmental approach to behavior and recognizing that 6th grade exists in both an elementary and a middle school environment." On page 12, in the Level 2 violation table, under the violation for misuse of computers, digital devices, or network, we have added the administrative response as law enforcement may be contacted, depending on the details and the severity of the incident. On page 13, under the violation for possession of obscene or pornographic literature, materials, or electronic images, we have also added an administrative response that law enforcement may be contacted. On that same page, under the tobacco violation, where we have included vaping, we have simplified the language to end, instead of identifying all the locations, to say where the student of code, where the Student Code of Conduct applies. On page 22, under the glossary definitions, you'll see that we have amended those same recommendations in the glossary. So page 22, under the misuse... So page 22, under the misuse of computers, digital devices, or network, to the narrative description, we added a final bullet that says, "Depending on the incident, law enforcement may be contacted." Similarly, on page 23, for the tobacco and vaping violation, we have reflected that same recommendation earlier of language that we have simplified by including where the Student Code of Conduct applies. On page 27, where we have added the sexual harassment violation in the glossary, we have added additional language that we have gathered from the Title IX legislation, and in consulting with our Title IX coordinator, we have added a bullet point to the glossary that includes, "Sexual harassment is the unwelcome conduct determined by a reasonable person to be so severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive that it effectively denies a person equal access to education, program, or activity." And we have included the reference there to the federal legislation. On page 29, under sexual assault, we have corrected an error which is including the contact information for the Title IX coordinator with the email address of equityanddiversity@ops.org. And those are the edits that we have made since the recommendation on May 3rd. At this time, we would ask the Board of Education to adopt the 2021-22 Student Code of Conduct draft that has been submitted to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McFarland. I do have one question that I didn't have the... I didn't... I didn't have when we spoke earlier, so I'm going to first ask if any board members have any other questions or comments that they'd like to raise at this point. Mr. Head.
Yeah, thank you, Acting President Erdenberger. So just real quick, I was reading the article on... In today's World-Herald about this this morning, and noticed in the comments, there was someone who mentioned that, you know, by removing the prohibition on gang clothing and apparel, we're all of a sudden going to have gangs in our schools and, you know, all of those related problems. Could you address how that's maybe, you know, covered in other sections of the policy?
Certainly. So I would ask that we look at the behavior, and that's what we address with our interventions. And so when people have... When students have inappropriate behavior, whether it is language, whether it is in their dress, whether it is intimidation, or any of the violations that we have listed in there, we address that. And so our recommendation to remove the gang violation was that we saw that it was being disproportionately applied to students, and it was about the students and not the behavior. And we have the behavior in there, so that is the reason for our recommendation.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Any other questions? Mr. Thielen.
Dr. McFarland, I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done on this and some of the very thoughtful changes you've made, especially around some of the things like the gang affiliation rules that really are aimed at making our Code of Conduct being enforced more fairly, and all the time that you've spent with our committee answering questions and taking our input. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thielen. I just have one question that I didn't ask you before, and it's really just a clarification more than a comment, and that is, in the early childhood practices... I'm going to have to get close to the words now. The last two sentences, I'm on page 6, if anybody else wants to follow, under early childhood practices, it says, "Suspension..." I'm getting way old. "Suspension from school is not an appropriate behavior intervention for early childhood academic..." Students, sorry. I'm with you there. Then it says, "Please contact the early childhood coordinator for additional resources." I realized I wasn't sure what that meant or who it was directed to. Is the teacher supposed to be contacting them, or is this... The principal should be... It just seems to me like maybe it could be a little bit more clear about who it is that's doing the contacting, and what might they do that isn't already covered as an intervention option?
That's an excellent question. And so as I have shared with you, that our Student Code of Conduct is really to communicate to our stakeholders, and it is guidance for administrators in responding. So really, it would be for any stakeholder that has questions about how we respond to behavior for our early childhood students. Ultimately, yes, we follow that we have behavior practices that we follow for our early childhood students, because again, this is a K-12 Student Code of Conduct. Our pre-K students are not mandatory, compulsory, or universal. So we want to give guidance to recognize that our focus is on addressing the behavior and helping our students to be able to maintain in a learning environment. But for any stakeholder who would have questions about how we respond to those early childhood students, that we would encourage them to follow these practices that are outlined here, but if they need additional support, that our coordinator for early childhood education would be a resource. So that would be for an administrator who's addressing behavior, for a parent who has a question, for a teacher, for anybody. Ultimately, we again would encourage our staff to go to their building leader first, but at the same time, it's about getting those resources in place for the little ones and for their learning. So however we get there, we want to make sure that we identify that we have an early childhood coordinator to respond.
Okay, great. That was my... I didn't know if it was always going through the principal, but a teacher, or a para, or anybody could contact directly. And I guess I'm just asking in terms of, it seems like you guys have done a very thorough job of outlining what the options and possibilities are as behavioral interventions. What theoretically would this person... What are they called? Early childhood coordinator. What additional interventions might they have, and are they already spelled out in the Code of Conduct?
So again, our Code of Conduct is for kindergarten through grade 12, so again, this is just guidance.
Got it.
But for example, I am certified in secondary. I am not certified in early childhood, and so it would be making sure that we have developmentally appropriate interventions for those students, the same guidance that she and all of our teachers give... Or administrators give to our teachers in early childhood classrooms. So it would be related to that.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Are there any other comments from board members? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the 2021-2022 Code of Conduct. Raise your hand if you're making the motion, please.
This is, I believe, a committee motion, so I think we just need a second.
We only... We just need a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Second. Okay. Mr. Ray, would you please take the roll call? Yes.
Head? Yes. Krackey?
Aye, yes.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipes?
Aye.
Thielen?
Aye.
Six aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, Dr. McFarland. Moving on to item J1D, approval of the first reading of policies 4044, 5404, and 8346, the Chair of the Policy Committee, Mr. Thielen, please.
Thank you. So I'm just going to walk through these very briefly, the kind of some of the rationale behind some of these policy changes and additions. Policy 4044 is a new policy that really just recognizes the arrangements that we've kind of had to deal with over the last year, which is remote learning and remote working, but also telecommuting, which is a little bit different, the more kind of regular working at home that might be... That might be necessary or appropriate. And so it's recognizing those kinds of arrangements and giving the superintendent the authority and direction to recognize the differences between teaching from a classroom and teaching at home, and all of the things that are involved in that. I guess I'll entertain questions kind of one by one if there are any. Policy 5404 is cooperation with law enforcement, and this is really connected to our contract with SROs and the police officers, and it's required by contract, and so this is the policy that was originated last year, or the impetus for it was originated in meetings that... Last year. And the changes that we have made really just reflect an intent to provide as much notice and opportunity to be present for parents as possible whenever law enforcement is involved with a student. Any questions there? Finally, policy 8346. This is a change to our policy about participation of the public at board meetings, and the intent here was to... I guess there's a couple different items, so I'm going to walk through those. The first is removing the overall time limit on how long we allow for public comment. We have kind of in practice always waived this requirement, and so we thought we would just go ahead and make that part of our regular policy, that there is no specific time limit. The Board President still has the authority to, I think, limit that within the policy if things were getting very long, but there is no policy as far as the exact limit on how long public comment can go. We did make a change to respect folks when there are a lot of people here for public comment. The folks that are at the end sometimes have to wait a very long time to speak, and so out of respect for those folks, we... If there's more than 15 speakers, rather than five minutes each, we've changed it to three minutes each, to make sure that everybody has time to participate and get their comments in a reasonable amount of time. Next change is to give a priority to speakers that are Omaha Public School students, so that they can have their comments heard and get home in case the board meeting or the public comment goes very long again. And then the final change is just to recognize that we always will take written comment, and the secretary will distribute those comments to the board for consideration. Any questions or comments on those policies?
Mrs. Krackey?
Sometimes it takes people five minutes to be heard, and we've done that for years and years and years. Maybe other districts have done that as well, or limited to three minutes, but I thought we were very careful to make certain that we allowed people who came all the way down here from wherever they lived to have their opportunity to say whatever they wanted to say. That's transparency, and that is what we talk about a lot. And so I don't agree that we should limit that to three minutes.
Ms. Krackey, I completely agree with you, and that was my first inclination as well, is that we really should stick to our five minutes. What really changed my mind is that there are so many people that come here from very far away, and they come all the way down here, and then they have to wait three hours to speak, and that just doesn't seem fair. And so what this is really aimed at is fairness for all of those people that come to speak, so that they are able to do it in a timely manner.
On the other hand, they may appreciate hearing what the other people said before them, and I think that's part of why they're here, and if they're coming on a certain item and they have something they want to say, I think we still need to hear them out.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Head.
Yeah, thank you, Acting President Erdenberger, and thank you, Mr. Thielen. I know you've put a lot of time into this and the rest of the policy committee as well, and you've... I know from talking with you, it seems like you've struggled with how to perfectly word this, so that we're not cutting down on someone's ability to be heard, yet respecting everyone's time, so I really do appreciate that, even if we may end up disagreeing at the end. So I guess I'll start... There's a couple places where I definitely agree with the changes here, so we'll go over those first. I really do like and appreciate, you know, especially having students be able to be heard first. I think that's a good change in policy. You know, especially on a Monday night, I think our kids need to be able to go home and do homework, or whatever else educationally versus sitting here until hours of the night. I also really appreciate, again, codifying at the end that we're going to accept written testimony. So if somebody, you know, doesn't have the ability to stick around all night, but they want to drop off a statement, then we'll accept that, and that'll be shared with the board. I think that's a really good change as well. I guess adding on to Mrs. Krackey's concern, though, I just have a problem with cutting testimony from five to three minutes. I know, you know, potentially standing... You're sitting here for four, five, six hours, you know, listening to people. We might not necessarily want to do that, but I think it's important that we make sure everybody has the ability to be heard, and, you know, as someone who's, you know, sat in the testifier's chair this time, and like, you know, this session and Lincoln a few times, I know, you know, when you have five minutes of testimony prepared, and then being told at the last minute, you have to cut it to three, it's difficult to decide what you're going to leave out, so I... I have a hard time agreeing with cutting the five minutes to three, but I still appreciate where you're coming from and your work on this, and especially the other parts, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Head.
Ms. Snipes?
I was actually one of the people in the group as well that had the same thoughts, and one of the questions that I did ask, because I'm definitely about community and definitely about being able to have our voices heard, and one of the questions that I asked, because I was trying to think back to the meetings that I've participated in since being a board member, was, "How many people are utilizing all of the five minutes?" And what came back was that majority of people are not utilizing the full five minutes. So I even think we talked about having those who... I mean, it's hard to tell how long your speech is going to be, but that is one of the questions that I did ask, and I completely understand what you're saying, and I think that it came back, it was a consensus, that majority of people were not utilizing that full five minutes, and I can't remember the full conversation.
Yeah, that's correct, Ms. Snipes. That was the consensus, is that while some people do use the five minutes, most people do not.
I was also a member of the Policy Committee, and I was operating on the... My experience as a member of the audience is I have seen when there are a lot of speakers, the board pass a motion at the meeting to go from five minutes to three minutes. So it's something that has already been part of the practice under certain circumstances, and we thought, rather than, you know, sort of stirring the pot at the time, we would just build it into the policy from the outset, that when we have a large number of speakers, then we will just automatically have it be three minutes each. I completely understand the notion of people wanting to have five minutes. I know that, on the other hand, we did do a survey of other school boards around the state, and almost none of them start with a five-minute limit, and all of them go down from whatever their limit is if there's a large number of people. So this is not inconsistent, not that we have to do things the way other people do, but it is not inconsistent with practice in other school boards across the state, and in fact, in the legislature, the notion of, at some point, the amount of time goes from five minutes to, in our case, three minutes, and we added the option, if someone doesn't get through their entire testimony, to be able to submit it in writing to the school board member. So it was that thought process, and plus, giving people at the end of the line a chance to be able to speak while there are still other people here listening to them, was part of our discussion to arrive at that three minutes. Mrs. Krackey?
I guess we could go back and forth with this for a long time, a very long time, but some of those school districts we're pointing out do not have the amount of students that we have, the amount of families that we have in our district. It's a much larger district, and I will hold on to my five minutes, but I did like the idea of having students first. I thought that was just a really good idea, so they can go home and get their homework done and go to bed, because some of the meetings did last a long time. For the public, they need to know that we were here hours and hours and hours for some of the testimony. And I remember earlier, being on the board years and years ago, and the whole room was packed with people, and we listened to testimony forever and ever, and it's just kind of what we do. There are parts of our job that are more fun than others. Visiting schools are so much more fun than sitting at a meeting and getting to see what's happening. Visiting schools are so much more fun than sitting at a meeting and getting to see what's going on. That's lots of fun. Sitting in a meeting is not always fun, but I do like the people we work with, and we have a good district, and our staff is great, so that is really how I feel. So sincerely, we have great people, but I would stick with the five minutes, and if they don't need the five minutes, that's fine, let them sit down. And we've also said to them, if this is redundant and someone else says it's part of your thing, you could maybe allude to it in a shorter version to get through it. But I still know that it takes me these days longer to get down here than it used to, because the traffic is very heavy, and Spencer probably is as far out in another way than I am, so the, both of us, and if you're coming south, that's a long trek to come into, so I don't want to minimize anyone's distance. But I think people who make the effort and come here, we need to hear them and be thoughtful, and sometimes we disagree, but we try to do it in a nice way, so, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Krackey. I think, reading the room, I would like to move, address each of these policies separately, if that's okay. Ms. Snipes?
So how are we defining a large number of speakers?
It's specifically written as 15 or more.
Can I entertain a motion to approve policy 4044?
So these, and I was corrected, we don't even need a second, this is another committee motion, but because there are more than one person on the committee that's already approved it, we really just need a vote, but I think what you have suggested, and I will move, is to split the question and have each one of these voted on individually.
Great, thanks.
So I think we'll need a second on that motion.
Okay, thank you. So can we take a roll call on policy 4044, which is the telecommuting remote work policy?
I'm sorry, just a point of clarity, yeah, that we'll need to approve the motion to split the question.
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah.
Can we do a roll call on approving the motion to split? I hope Siobhan comes back for the next board meeting.
Head?
Yes?
Krackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipes?
Aye.
Thielen?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Six aye.
Okay, we have now split the question, and we will consider policy 4044, which is the telecommuting remote work policy. And since two policy Board, Committee Members are on the Board, we can go straight to a roll call? No? Yes? Okay, we can, thank you. Roll call, please.
Krackey?
I'm not certain what that is, would you please read it?
We're doing just the first one, the 4044, the one about remote work and telecommuting.
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipes?
Aye.
Thielen?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Six aye.
Thank you, motion passed. Now we will consider the second policy, which is the 5404, and that's the one about the relationship between the administration and the SROs, if you will, the reading of constitutional rights and contacting parents, but it's the second policy we discussed. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipes?
Aye.
Thielen?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Krackey?
Aye.
Six aye.
Okay, motion passed, and unless we have further discussion about 8346, I guess we will vote on, Mr. Head?
Yeah, thank you Acting President Erdenberger. I'd like to propose an amendment to paragraph four to strike the new language and reinsert the stricken, so that way, the policy for speakers would remain five minutes as it exists today, but it would keep all of the other changes.
Just to clarify, striking, leaving the one-hour limit struck, right? So we will no longer have the one-hour limit and striking the five-to-three-minute new language?
So I would strike the new language and reinsert what was stricken out, so the one-hour limit would stay in policy, but if other people want to keep that out too, I'm open to that.
Mrs. Krackey?
One-hour limit, I'm certain that when we had 21 people at some of those meetings at five minutes each, or three, or whatever, it went over an hour, so I don't think we can say anything is an hour limit, that I think that should be removed.
I agree with Ms. Krackey, I mean, it kind of...
Could you, I want to make sure I understood what you said, you're suggesting we should not have the one-hour limit?
I think that we need, perhaps there are times when we will have more than a one-hour limit, and I'm not going to personally cut off anybody if they have come all the way down here and they want to talk. So I think we shouldn't even have the limit of one hour in there. We listened many hours for a couple of times this year, and we did it in a respectful manner, and we respected the people who came down.
Thank you. Ms. Snipes, did you have your hand up?
I was actually agreeing with Ms. Krackey. I know that we had discussions in the Policy Meeting, but, you know, I was kind of on the fence with that anyway, and if we're going to keep it at five minutes, which I don't necessarily disagree with, people do have the right to be heard, it kind of just, to me, just defeats the purpose to have a limit of one hour.
Mr. Thielen?
I guess just a point of order, I think we just need clarity on Mr. Head's motion.
Yeah, okay. And then we discuss, I think we're at the discussion part, right?
I guess I'm not clear exactly where the motion stands.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the amendment that I made would be to just make paragraph five, so it reads as current policy is...
Paragraph four?
Paragraph four, sorry. So would it be in order to amend the amendment, or pull the amendment and make a new one to not reinstate the one-hour max?
How about the amendment would be, tell me what you think paragraph four should read?
Okay. So the amendment would be to strike the new language and leave the stricken language struck, so the paragraph would end after five minutes?
Right. Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Krackey?
When you talked about five-minute limit and limiting people, and you were talking about number, that would be 12 people, and so we, I mean, that would be, if we left it that way, in five minutes, in one-hour limit, that might be 12 people, and there might be 20 of them out there. So, again, I agree with Mr. Head.
Okay, so at this point, we have an amendment to, we have a motion to amend the policy, so it will read, the fourth paragraph will read, "The President or Chair for the meeting shall have the authority to establish reasonable time limits for individual speakers and for the duration of public comment sessions. The maximum permitted duration for individual speakers is five minutes, period." Okay, so Mr. Head made that motion, do I have a second?
Me.
Mrs. Krackey, would you, we're going to be voting on that amendment, Mr. Ray, please.
Snipes?
Aye.
Thielen?
No.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Krackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Okay, so motion passed, and now we will go to consider the amended policy, we will go to consider policy 8346 as proposed and amended. Is there any further discussion on the now amended proposal? Then I think we can have our roll call, please, thank you. No, no, we cannot have a roll call, one second, please. I meant to say I need a motion and a second, does anybody move that we do that?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Snipes, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, okay, now we will have a roll call, thank you.
Thielen?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Krackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipes?
Aye.
Six aye.
Thank you, everyone, motion passed. I don't remember Siobhan having to do this. Okay. We now are going to entertain item J1E, which was I-13 on the consent agenda. I-13 on the consent agenda was to consider approval of the construction documents for design of the Buena Vista High School, One World Clinic, and YMCA Express Project General Fund. I have some speakers prepared to tell us about it, apparently, thank you.
Good evening, Acting President Erdenberger, Mr. Smith, Board, Dr. Logan, I have a whole family with me. So, Mr. Roberts will help answer questions regarding any of the budget, I've got Darwin Rhodey here, he is the Director of Buildings and Grounds, and Mark Summer is the manager, project manager for Jacobs. So we're happy to entertain any questions that you've got.
Mr. Head?
Thank you Acting President Erdenberger. So I had just asked that this one be pulled from consent, not because I have any real concerns with it, I actually echo Member Snipes' comments earlier, I'm excited about the partnership and think it's definitely a good way for us to go and a good opportunity for our students. I more just wanted to have a public conversation on it before we go kind of too far down this path. So could you provide us, I guess, a little bit of detail about just the kind of who, what, when, why, what it's going to look like, you know, why we're doing this, and how it's going to come to be?
Absolutely. So the high school, Buena Vista, was built out originally to have a wellness center in it, because, as Dr. Logan said, wellness is so critical for our students, and having a facility directly in the school is also beneficial for our students, our staff, and the community, to make sure kids are in school, on time, on task. We did, as Dr. Logan said, I think she has been attached to the hip with Douglas County Health, as well as with UNMC and One World. They have provided so many opportunities for our students during this pandemic, that it just seemed like they were the natural partner to come in. They have a vision for our community that really fits with our North Star.
When the project was originally conceived, there was about 4,600 square feet that was assigned to a potential wellness or school-based health center. When, as we moved through the project, Mr. Summer contacted us to say, hey, what are we going to do? So we met with the team from One World, and they kind of identified that they needed a very small amount of that space. So we had this additional space, and we contacted the YMCA to see if they would potentially be interested in some of the other space for some sort of wellness around fitness, et cetera, and they were. So over, it took several months to get to where we are tonight, to look at the space. I will say that Andrea Skolkin and Chris Twintin from the YMCA really collaborated to kind of understand, this is how much I would need, this is how much, how much I really, we could use, how much they could use. Mr. Rhodey was involved in those conversations as well. There were a lot of, there was a lot of back and forth, as, you know, Mr. Summer with kind of leading and facilitating the effort to get to where we were, you'd share bathroom space, those kinds of things, and to make sure that we have a secure space, too, because our primary role is serving our young people as a regular comprehensive high school. And that's how we got here today. The space is ours, we will, we plan to lease it to them for a very nominal amount, as in $1, and that will, that agreement would come to you later, but it would always be the Omaha Public Schools. We will put in the floors and those kinds of things, they will have to provide the fixtures, furnishing, and equipment that is specific for their organizations, but having them design in the, as a part of this process allows for electricity to be where it needs to be, and those kinds of things. I know that One World plans to have, at least if I remember correctly, some behavioral health considerations, as that is a sort of a focus, as we have some pretty significant needs around that, and so that's kind of how we got here today. The space will always be ours, the lease would be, is forthcoming, likely will be five years for each of these, and obviously, subject to renewal, but those would be, I mean, those are in the, on the legal realm, I'll stop with right there, but I'm happy to entertain any other questions.
Oh, perfect, that's great, thank you both.
You're welcome, thank you, and thank you for your support, appreciate it, Darwin, sorry, Mr. Rhodey, Dr. Sturba, Mr. Summer, and Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, everyone, for being prepared to answer questions, appreciate it, we're excited about this. I will entertain a motion to approve the, approve the construction documents for design of the Buena Vista High School, One World Clinic, and YMCA Express Project.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Smith has moved, and Ms. Krackey, I believe, seconded it. Mr. Ray?
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Krackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipes?
Aye.
Excellent, motion passed, thank you very much.
Thielen?
Aye.
Six aye.
I forgot, we had so many people here tonight. We have two reports that have been turned in, the CBOC update of the Phase I and Phase II bond programs, and the actuarial valuation report for O-Sers, the Omaha School Employees' Retirement System. I believe that is all of the, are all of the items for consideration, and I will entertain a motion to move to closed session. Board Member Smith?
I moved at the Board of Education going to closed session for protection of the public interest for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Darwin Rhodey, Lisa Sturba, Charles Wakefield, and Legal Counsel, Legal Advice, pending litigation, negotiations, and real estate.
Second.
Who was that, Head? Okay, we have a motion by Smith, seconded by Head, Mr. Ray?
Head?
Aye.
Krackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipes?
Aye.
Thielen?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Six aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Let me remind the Board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Darwin Rhodey, Lisa Sturba, Charles Wakefield, and Legal Counsel, Legal Advice, pending litigation, negotiations, and real estate. Let the record reflect that the Board went into closed session at 7:42, thank you. Darwin Rhodey, Lisa Sterba, Charles Wakefield, and Legal Counsel, Legal Advice, pending litigation, negotiations, and real estate. Let the record reflect that the Board went into closed session at 7:42. Thank you. Okay, let the record reflect. The Board came out of closed session at 8:10 p.m. And let the record reflect, first point of personal privilege, I hope Siobhan gets better fast. Finally, let the record reflect that the Board meeting adjourned at 8:10 p.m. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Appreciate it.